Call to order the special council meeting of Wednesday, August 21st, 2024, for the purpose of interviewing candidates for the Equity and Inclusion Commission. For roll call purposes, we'll note that council members Strawn and Schroeder are not able to be here this evening, but we do have a quorum, and so we're able to conduct this business for the council with Councilmember Ratten, Councilmember Graff, and myself. We will proceed right into the interviews, and so we're just awaiting the first candidate coming into the chambers here, and then we'll begin.
We're ready. Thank you.
Yes, and nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello.
Nice to meet you. Tried to space ourselves out, so you'd have to walk all the way around.
I need the steps.
Yeah. Well, feel free to put your name tag in front of you there, and the folks watching the video can see that, because we have two councilmembers not here tonight, they're going to watch afterwards and be able to get the information that way, and then, you know, that'll help them make their decision along with us on the appointments we make. But we do want to welcome you to this interview process for the Equity and Inclusion Commission, and thank you for your interest in serving. I'll do a quick description of kind of what the process will be, and then essentially it'll be a round of questions from the three of us, and then an opportunity after that, if there's anything you want to add or anything we didn't cover that you want to make sure we know about in considering your application, we'll do that, and then hopefully in about 10 minutes' time, we'll be done.
Okay, great.
All right. Well, with that, then, why don't we go ahead and have Councilmember Graff ask the first question?
Thank you for being here, Mr. Shad. How do you, I'll ask the first question, is how do your experience and skills relate to serving on a city commission?
First of all, I'm an immigrant myself, and through college, my career, and community involvement, I have experienced the view from the other side. I think that's one. But over the years, I have an international position that I actually get exposed to different cultures around the world, so that helps it, and was quite active in volunteering. So one of my first things that I put down in my application was I was on the 1987 Cultural Diversity Council at Pillsbury.
Yes.
Now, it was a learning process, but that's 40 years ago. So imagine that actually this topic has been around forever. So I also get very involved in community volunteering for AARP, for YMCA, for St. Paul Park and Rec, and even Roseville. I actually volunteered for events in Roseville. So all this contributed to my learnings, not the wisdom necessary, but I say, hey, there is a topic that we need to address. If I'm a citizen of this, I will bring my experience, and I think all the experience over the years helps me to become a good candidate for it.
Thank you.
Great. The second question is more specific to this particular commission, and that is, when you submitted your application, what motivated you to want to be part of the Equity and Inclusion Commission?
Well, first of all, I'm a Roseville resident, and I have seen more than any other cities I've lived in, the attention to diversity, equity, inclusion in Roseville. I was very excited when I moved here, I said, wow, this is on the agenda. And so as I learned more, the Roseville Lutheran Church just have a talk of diversity yesterday. I'm on the YMCA Volunteering Council for the Community Board. We're talking about that, St. Paul Park, and we're talking about that, but there's a lot of talking. So what motivates me is, as a good citizen, I need to put my own two cents in. I need to, hey, you want to help? I put my name in. If I'm picked, great, I'll help. If I'm not picked, I'll help in some other way. So motivate me to make it a better place, because I live here.
Thank you. Councilmember Ratten? Thank you for being here. Please explain your understanding of the scope or duty of this commission.
Okay, first of all, I don't want to reread this, but I think as part of the commission, we need to review the, I think, the policy in place, the action plan in place, so that's one of the things to do. The second thing, it says that actually there's a strategic plan that has to be, get feedback and help build it. The third part is be an action team member, contribute, actively participate, attend all the scheduled meetings, prepare materials, and also don't do the things you're not supposed to do. You're not representing the city, so I am aware of those. Those are the things, the basic stuff, but honestly, I also am here to learn. So I think there's a big part of learning too, not necessarily doing the job, that this is a good thing here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Graff?
Here's an easy one, I hope. What do you love most about living in Roseville?
Oh, I think the community is wonderful. My first exposure actually is St. Paul, the Roseville Park and Rec. I'm very active. I walk a lot of the parks. I do some volunteering. So I like the community. We have a diverse community. But as I said, I repeat one more time, is when I first read these things that sent to my house, and I see that diversity is such a big deal here, I liked it. I also like a little statement that was made, is the world has thrown a lot of curveballs at us, federal, state, we need to do something ourselves, because we live here. So I love this about the attention being paid. I also like the action being done. So when I call the Park and Rec, hey, there's a broken board, there's a cracked road, things are done well. The second thing I like too, there's a good inclusive listening process. We're having a meeting, trying to do county O E, and way before you do the action, you have a plan in place, invite input. So the process that we use in Roseville here, I think is very good. You're inclusive, you're listening, before you make decisions for the city.
Thank you. And the last question is, can be sometimes the most challenging one, we'll see how it goes. So sometimes commissions make recommendations to the council on a matter that has a lot of strong feelings in the community, perhaps even from opposing points of view, and that can manifest itself in a lot of people coming to a meeting and having a lot of different points of view that they're expressing as part of the public input process. So you can talk a little bit about how you would expect to deal with those situations and how the commission might come to its recommendation as part of that?
I thought about this actually a lot, the most, because you are in front of the public. You're in front of the public, and I used to think that, hey, well, it's easier than the school board, it's easier than the Y. Actually, it's not. Everywhere you go allows you with a public, there is always opinions, lack of facts, and emotions. Okay, so I thought about it, so I would not say that this is easier, but I thought that this is a very sensitive subject, a very important subject to me and our city, and I want to be here to actually be contributing by listening first, get all the facts straight, and do the right things, knowing that the right things is always sometimes painful. Okay? So I'm also have the attitude, I'm coming to learn, because I have not been in a position like this before. So it's critical that whoever is the commission is humble enough to say, yeah, it is going to be difficult. There will be people screaming across both sides. Make the best decision based on the information correct, the process being used, and be true to yourself and true to the city. I think that's the only way, but it's not going to be any more difficult than deciding where to put a pickleball court.
That is one of the bigger challenges.
I know that.
There are no right answers in that famous situation. Well, thank you for that answer, and we appreciate that insight, and wanted to make sure, is there anything else you wanted to either ask us, or anything you wanted to let us know about that we may not have covered in these five questions?
Well, I actually did a lot of reading, I read the website, I'm actually happy to see there's a lot of very good candidates. So before I go, I say, I like to be on it, because I like to volunteer, I do a lot of volunteering over the last 40 years, and this, as I put down my answer, my favorite was actually Park and Rec, because I used to park, but I think this one needs someone that have been true hard to do it. So the question I have is, I really like this, the action of government, federal, state, and local level have created razor disparity. Who decided to put this in? I think this is very true.
I think it was kind of a group decision, through a process we've had over a number of years, actually, of discussion, but it's true, exactly.
I appreciate this very much, because they just speak to the truth, and I think they'll speak to the importance of people stepping up and doing what we can, so I'm trying to do that.
Thank you very much. We wish you luck. We're going to be making our appointment decisions on September 9th, which is our next council meeting, and certainly you can follow that meeting live, of course, but certainly staff will make sure and follow up with all the applicants as well.
Thank you, appreciate it. Nice to meet you.
Yeah, nice to meet you too. Yes, exactly.
All right, thank you.
And don't forget, there you go, all right. Thank you. Have a seat at one of the quadrants of the table here. Good evening, and thank you for applying for the Equity and Inclusion Commission for the City of Roseville. I believe you may be a repeat applicant for a commission with the city, perhaps, or am I mistaken?
Maybe, it might have been a while ago, but not recently.
I was gonna say, I recognize the name, unless I'm just thinking of it from something else, but regardless, could be.
Wait, tell us about that.
That's how we all know each other, right? These days. Well, again, thank you for your interest in the commission, for being here this evening, for the interview process. We will do a round of questions from the councilmembers. We do have two councilmembers who aren't able to be here this evening, so that's one of the reasons that we're videotaping, and then they'll be able to watch that and be informed in their contribution to the decision-making that we make at the end of this process. So with that, I think this round of questions I'm actually starting with, so get right into it. And then I should note that we'll have an opportunity at the end of that, if there's anything we haven't covered you want to make sure we know about in support of your application or your service, or any questions you have for us.
Perfect.
There's water there, if the questions get too intense, feel free to partake. With that, the first question is an opportunity for you to elaborate on your application and talk about how your experience and skills relate to serving on this type of city commission.
So I work in an environment of inclusion. I work in housing, in affordable housing for the state of Minnesota. So my whole career has been working with diverse communities, different religions, different ethnicities, different capabilities. I'm also a veteran, I'm a disabled veteran, I'm a biracial black woman, so I kind of meet those DEI categories, even though that's like a naughty word right now. What we need to do is break away from that being like this negative connotation. But I live in Roseville, but I'm only like less than the 14% of the community, in the minority community, and I see what's going on, I hear what's going on, I read what's going on, and I want people to see that it's not always negative when they hear something. Like, affordable housing does not bring crime. It means that your grandma, who lives on $1,000 of social security, pays $230 a month in rent and can afford her groceries and her medicine, not that you're the grandma that's moving in affordable housing is going to steal your car. So we need to get that through to our community, because when you look at the comments and everything around the community, it's about, oh, I'm a taxpayer and I don't want this. Well, I'm a taxpayer too, and you may look at me and think, you don't own a house, you don't pay taxes, you don't do this, you don't do that, but I do, and I need you to see me as equal as you see yourself. So it's kind of why I applied.
Thank you. And just a follow-up too, you know, of course, a commission is a group of people having conversations and trying to come to consensus on a recommendation to the council, and do you have some experience in that type of environment, either serving on boards or other things in the past, or, you know, things that need in your experience that might help you be able to apply that to this work?
I think my role now, I work as the Federal Riddle Assistance Program for the state, has put me in a position where I've had to work with the different jurisdictions, the different counties, the different landlord boards, the different resident boards, to come to a consensus of what is best and how to use the funds that were given to the state, even though they're gone, and how we can use them and make sure that the people that need the funds are getting the funds and hearing different points of view. It hasn't been an easy program, and there's been a lot of hate, but we've done a good job, I think.
So thank you for that added information. Councilmember Ratten on the next question.
I think I know the answer, but what motivates you to be part of this volunteer commission?
Getting the community to know, I'm, my kids live in Roseville, I'm raising a, not raising, I'm helping to raise a, my grandson, who is black, and I want him to not be looked at like, oh, God, this kid is walking around the streets, what's wrong with him? I want people to know that our community is diverse, and not just the seniors or the people that have lived here a really long time. This is a diverse community, and we're building and we're bringing people in, and other people get to live on this, in the community, and get to make decisions that are best for everyone. And again, not just, equity does not mean we're excluding certain people, it means it's bringing everyone to the table so that they all can have a conversation.
Okay. Councilmember Graff? It's me. Please explain your understanding of the scope or duty of the commission?
So my understanding is that we will work with other people to come up with plans that are good for this, like the City of Roseville. So our opinions on things, maybe work with other community members to see, like, to give them an idea of what's going on, work with the inclusion, the strategic plans, give feedback on things that are coming to the city so that other people can understand what's going on and get like a better idea of, it's not just this, it's negative, everything's negative. It's not, but that's what it feels like. Thanks. Change is good.
And the next question, for a little bit of a change of pace here, what's the thing you love most about living in Roseville?
I would say it's kind of that small-town feel, but it's got all the amenities. So like, if I need to go run a Target, it's right there, but I also live kind of on a block where there's nothing behind me. I live, like, my house's backs up to the temple over off of Dale, and so no part of that's my land. It just makes it seem like there's nobody, it's park-like, it's, I'm not bothering anybody, and our neighbors in our neighborhood is really quiet, and we say hi to each other. I wish we were more neighborly, like, hey, let's all hang out together, or have a block party, but we also don't have a lot of kids on our blocks, I think that plays a major role in what's going on. So in other blocks where there's more children, there's more like togetherness, where in my block, there's more like adults, so we don't have that yet. But I wish we could get that and bring that to a lot of neighborhoods, because I remember living in a neighborhood in St. Paul and being like, I'm going next door to grab sugar, and just knocking on the door and like walking in, and now I'm like, I wave to my neighbors and tell them they can park their cars in my driveway during snow emergencies, so.
It's nice.
They have a lot of cars, only have one, so.
Well, that's nice.
Very brilliant.
Councilmember Graff? All right. Sometimes the commission makes a recommendation on a matter that has a lot of strong feelings from the public. How would you expect to deal with such situations while serving on the commission?
Listening. That's, I mean, you have to listen to everybody's concerns, I'll use affordable housing as an example, that always has such a negative connotation to it, and you want to listen to what the community has to say or what their feelings are about it, but you also want to communicate the good things about what's going to happen, and let them know that you're listening to them, because I think in any issue, if you're being listened to, that makes you feel good, and you're more willing to listen to what's going on. So if you have a complaint, I listen and then I tell you, hey, how about this? This is what it's going to be, this is why we're doing it, and you're more likely to listen first, just speaking, being spoken to.
Thank you.
Those are the questions we have this evening for the interview. Is there anything we haven't covered? Yeah, it goes fast. Anything that we haven't covered that we want to make sure we know about as part of considering your application for service here, or any questions you have for us?
No, I mean, I think I said it, I am one of the diverse members of Roseville, and I want to be able to help shape and see what's going on in our community, and for my kids that are growing up here, and for my grandson who's growing up here, so that he can feel welcome and not feel like he's well excluded and things, and so, as soon as my daughter graduated from the alternative school, so it's just, we've been here a while. Didn't think I'd be here a while, but we've been here a while. So I like to see it shaped, so that my grandson, while he's here and starts school, he'll be able to feel included, so.
And I should note, we'll be making our decision on, as a council, on the appointments for this commission on September 9th, which is our next council meeting.
Okay.
And you can keep tabs on that, and certainly Rachel and the staff will also make sure that all the applicants are aware of what appointments were made and what your status is after that. And I did note that you also noted your interest in the planning commission.
Yes.
I think one of the things we're trying to do, in addition to looking at the makeup of this commission, is making sure that all of our commissions are really representative of the community, and so certainly keep that sort of in the back pocket in case you don't get appointed in this particular process. That usually in the spring, around February, we have applications for our other commissions. This is kind of a special process, because we're starting this one new, but that's the usual timing, and then sometimes in the fall, there's also, if there's turnover on a commission, there might be an opening. So keep tabs on that as well, but wish you the best of luck in this process, and hopefully you do get appointed.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time this evening.
Me too.
Have a good day.
You too.
Have a seat.
That's your spot.
I'd make it not too confusing as to where your table here.
So I'm started. So, hey, I'm Gabrielle Phillip Crawford, and I'm interviewing for the Equity and Inclusion Commission.
Thank you for that, and thank you for applying, and your interest in serving in the, in this capacity, and subjecting yourselves to, yourself to the interview this evening. We'll try to be as easy as we can on you here.
Sounds good.
It's, nobody's, nobody's come out with wounds or bruises, something like that.
So far, it's lunch comes.
Yeah, okay, good.
She's worried about that yet.
So what we'll do is we'll do a round of questions from us councilmembers here. We do have two councilmembers who are not here this evening, they will be watching the video of this, and that will help them inform their decision-making. And then once we do the round of questions, it's five questions here, if there's anything we haven't covered you want to make sure we know about, feel free to let us know that at that time, or if there's questions you have for us, that'd be a perfect time for that.
Sounds good, thank you so much.
Well, we'll begin then, this round of questions, with Councilmember Ratten.
Thank you again for being here. How do your life experiences and skills relate to serving on a commission like this?
So my background is, I was a professor for six years at St. Catherine University. My areas of expertise were on prejudice and stereotyping, particularly focused on the LGBTQ community, and currently I work in policy research and program evaluation. So I have a lot of experience in exploring the impact of different programs that address equity and inclusion issues, particularly around things like workforce engagement and public benefits. So I'm not only experienced with sort of thinking through these issues and how public policy impacts them, but also then developing communication around those issues and sharing that with policymakers. So a lot of experience of building different communication strategies to communicate around equity and inclusion.
Thank you. Councilmember Graff?
Thanks for being here.
Yeah.
What motivates you to be part of this volunteer commission?
I live in Roseville, I've been here for the last nearly five years now, I'm raising a child here, and I really love this community. It's been a great city to live in, and I think that one thing that I've really appreciated is following over time the evolution of the equity and inclusion processes with the City of Roseville. I can see that there's a really clear commitment to making active change in the area of equity, and that's not always the case for everywhere. So sometimes you see sort of, let's check the boxes and do sort of a performative, you know, surface-level treatment of equity and inclusion issues, and it looks to me, from the outside so far, that Roseville's really trying to take an active role in really understanding that, you know, for example, there's a big difference between being, not being racist and being anti-racist. And so I think that there's a lot of progress that's already been made in that area, and this seems like a really great way to get involved and help continue to move that forward.
Thank you. All right. The third question is, kind of expands on that a little bit in terms of, can you talk about your understanding of the scope and duties of this commission and how it's, how it's going to fit into the system?
Yeah. My understanding is that the commission serves an advisory role to the city council, and so the lived experiences and areas of expertise of the commission members are a way for the community voice to be heard directly in the council chamber, and to really communicate what concerns are of citizens of Roseville around issues of equity and inclusion. So I think that it's really a space to make sure that diverse voices are being heard here, and again, in that advisory capacity, so recognizing that the commission members are not themselves policymakers, but are the ones that can sort of help inform and offer recommendations around policies that are being considered.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Ratten?
Just, we are moving fast. We're intelligent, we're clear, and succinct, and they are, here we go.
I had to ask if we were going too fast.
What do you love most about living in Roseville?
I think that... I think that um, so as I said, I'm raising a child here. And I think that kind of the highest compliment I can pay is it feels like a good place to bring up the kid. There's, there's a strong sense of community here and uh um in many areas where I've had the chance to interact with folks, a strong sense of belonging that is fostered here. So when I'm interacting with the park system here, with the libraries here, there is um, people are deeply committed to working for this to for this community to be successful. So I think that's been a big part of it. It's just, it feels like a place that is um, that is safe, is secure for me and for my family, but also that is recognizing areas that it can improve. And it seems like there's active motion, active forward motion to try to identify areas for improvement and move things forward. So I think that that forward-thinking nature of the city coupled with, you know, the already existing um great services that are here is what makes us a good place to live for me.
Yeah.
All right. And Councilmember.
Sometimes the commission makes a recommendation on a matter that has a lot of, a lot of strong feelings from the public. Perhaps from opposing, uh, obviously quite often from opposing, opposing perspectives. How would you expect to deal with such situations while serving on the commission?
Yeah, I think that's a fantastic question. And like in my mind, I kind of break that down into two pieces. So one is um, so first I'll say that my background in teaching and in teaching and researching on topics like prejudice and um discrimination, stereotyping, um, I'm definitely very accustomed to facilitating discussions on difficult topics and highly emotionally charged topics and figuring out how to bring people into that conversation and create an atmosphere where people do feel safe sharing their opinions. And I think it's important to distinguish between um feeling safe and feeling uncomfortable. Difficult conversations can be uncomfortable and they kind of should be. They are there to push us out of our comfort zone. And that's fine. And that's okay. But no one should feel unsafe engaging in the conversation. So I think creating a space where people are able to engage respectfully and safely is key. So I would say when, at the point where a recommendation has been made, there are strong feelings about it. I think it's about, you know, showing kindness, showing respect and engaging in those conversations. And um, and uncomfortable holding that position and not backing down. And I say that, you know, this, this might be a difficult topic. This is the stance that we've taken on it. This is why. And providing enough information to people in a way that they're able to engage with so they can recognize where that decision came from. I would also say with regard to that, that it can often, it's not always easy to predict what's going to push buttons. But sometimes you can see, okay, we're working on this topic. There's going to be heated feelings around this. So the earlier people can be engaged in that process, the better, the more collaborative of a process it becomes. I've definitely um seen this happen in organizations where I've been watching from the outside as an evaluator and organizations I've been a part of that leadership might identify an issue, do lots of behind the scenes thoughtful work and try to craft what they think is the best solution, put it out there and then are blindsided by the kind of pushback that they get. And often it's not even that there's a problem with the solution. It's that people weren't asked. They didn't feel like they were heard upfront. So I think what matters the most is if you can look ahead and see this is going to be a contentious topic. Bringing the problem to people before you're bringing a solution to them. Here's the issue we're facing. What do you guys think? What are ideas out there? What are your experiences around this? And I think one of the key parts of that whole communication and collaboration process is people need to know you're hearing them and they need to know how what they're saying is being used. How is it going to make an impact on what's being done? So not only, you know, not a listening session where um we just hear concerns and then, you know, make their choice that was already made behind the scenes, but that you can show people, we had a public session for comment. Here's the ideas that people raised. Here's how it got incorporated into changes that we made. So really making sure that voices are being heard and incorporated from the beginning can, can't entirely derail the reactions people are going to have, but can hopefully um get more buy-in from more people earlier in the process.
Thank you. Uh, so is there anything we haven't covered in our brief conversation this evening you want to make sure we know about or questions you have for us?
Yeah, I mean, I think I just want to emphasize again that I think what stands out to me about this process and kind of about the goals that Roseville has set around equity and inclusion is that it seems to be an active process of trying to actively draw people in and really um proactively change policies or change procedures or enact different things to promote the goals of equity and inclusion, um, which I do think stands apart from a lot of other municipalities. And um, oh, there was another thing I was going to say. What was it? Yeah, I, I mean, I would also say just that um my experience of living in Minnesota and working with the diverse communities here. I think that uh this isn't unique to Roseville, but you know, people's zip code tends to be one of the strongest predictors of, of outcomes, right? Of health outcomes, educational outcomes, building up, being able to build up generational wealth. And I think that um there's a lot that Roseville's already done to create a more equitable and integrated community here. But there's definitely still steps that can be taken. So seeing that active progress is really encouraging. And I think it's something that I could help contribute to.
Thank you again, and we wish you the best of luck in this process. Uh, the council will be making our decision on uh September 9th at our next council meeting. Staff will make sure and let everybody know the results.
Great. Thank you so much for your time.
It's a pleasure as well. Good evening.
Thank you. You too.
Yes, it's me.
Thank you.
Continuing interest in serving. Appreciate that.
You know, I had to think a lot about it, only because I have to think about what service I can provide. You know, that's useful. That helps the community. So I have answers for that. If you ever want to ask them.
Uh, well, I uh want to officially again welcome you this evening for these interviews and uh and uh appreciate your past service to the community on the Human Rights Inclusion Engagement Commission and your interest in serving on the Equity and Inclusion Commission uh going forward here. Uh, your uh kind of old hat at the interview process, uh, so we won't to spend a lot of time explaining it again to you. But we've certainly got council members here. Uh, we'll do a round of questions. Uh, and then at the end of that, if there is anything we haven't covered that you want to make sure we know about, uh, or any questions, of course, that you might have for us, we'll, we'll make sure and give an opportunity to cover that as well. And with that, I believe Councilmember Graff, you start this round of questions.
Thank you, Matt. Good to see you. How do you, this is, we, we started to know some of these answers, but we were going to go through them again anyway. How do your experiences and skills relate to serving on a city commission?
Okay. First of all, I did. It was a little frustrating because anytime I had program proposals, I was told to wait and reasonably because the, the scope of the commission was open to question and has been changed. So that's one. Two would be um my work with the uh, to some extent with the LGBTQ community as a physician, um, serving the needs of the HIV population. The third would be the work I've done for um the, the Wakoni Ridge View Hospital System. I upgraded their infection control system and uh developed and chaired the program for antimicrobial stewardship, which is how those drugs are appropriately used in the formulary in their hospital system. So it's in and outpatient. But the point is, it's not just developing the work plans. It's um making sure that you, you develop a program, make it useful for the patient and uh working staff, gather the data and measure the outcomes and report federally. So I'm familiar with working with systems that are strategically developed. They have mission, a vision. They have goals. They have specific goals for short term and long term. They have work plans you develop around them. They have outcomes that you measure and report. Okay. Which is what I've also hopefully envisioned for this new commission. So that you actually are of service. You know what you've done that works, what you haven't done that works, what needs to be done for the next segment, you know, a few months, a year or whatever, long-term goals, short-term goals. And the first step in that is going to be finding what the community needs. Which is a little tougher for me because my connection to the community is largely through the commission. And the neighborhood that I live in and the people that I know, that's expanding. But I actually made a proposal to uh, to our new diversity director. He's a great guy. Seems quite brilliant. And what I told him is, look, whether I'm a commission member or not, here's at least one thing I would like to do. And that is to see if the city can sponsor a series of forums. And it's not entirely about diversity or inclusion um or equity, but that's a big piece of it. Get the word out to the appropriate communities and sub-communities within Roseville and hold forums on specific issues. An example would be, we have a circulator that, that helps people with transportation that can't really provide their own. But I've hearing from some people, well, I didn't even know that existed, or it never comes to me, you know, when I need something. And it only goes to the, to the shopping malls. Well, no, that's not true at all. So when, let's have a forum. Let's bring those people in and say, here's what's available to you. Here's how you make use of it. You know, that's just one issue. And making sure in terms of the inclusion and equity part of that, that um we have a stated goal to make sure that all of those communities are served and uh, and measure those outcomes and then report them to you guys. And if we need resources that are not already provided, and it's not all money. I mean, there's human resources as well. To know where to go to ask and see, and hopefully see what response we can get to, to what's needed. And that's just, that's a simple, single issue. I'm going on, I don't have too much of a time. So ask the next question.
I was going to say, we've got five questions here. So uh, we're 20% of the way there. In this uh next question, uh, this probably is a little bit informed by your own experience once again, but uh specific to this new commission uh, and the fact that you're applying for it, what, what motivates you to be part of this uh commission as it's now envisioned and being put into place?
Because it can serve the community better than we did before. It can actually have a strategic plan. It can have a mission and a vision. It can set goals. It can measure outcomes. It can be directly involved with diverse members of the community to discover their needs and see how the city can serve them and how we can serve them personally. Which is something that we just talked and talked and talked and talked about before. And, and now it's time to start from the beginning and do those things and serve the community. Actually work and serve the community. And I think this commission can do it because the scope is written to give a mandate and power to do it.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember.
This ties to what you just said, we're talking about. Please explain your understanding of the scope or duty of the commission. So you may feel like you've covered that.
I think I have. I mean, the scope, the scope of the commission is uh to serve the um diverse population of the city of Roseville and sometimes beyond. But specifically and especially the diverse population of the city of Roseville in multiple ways. And the vision is to, to is inclusivity. Bring, bring the population in to be part of the process that affects their lives and the lives of the, the people around them.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Graff. What do you love most about living in Roseville?
I knew, I thought about that question for a while. The people, the neighbors that I've met, the enthusiasm for be, for being a part of the community and doing things that, that help each other out. It's Roseville nice. So the people is what I love the most. And then I'm going to be very, very honest. Location. Because we do a lot, not only within the city, but in both of the downtown major twin cities. And, and we're, we're older. I represent part of the senior population as well. And um, we're older and it's easier to get to those things that we need to get to. And when we can't, it's a city which, which we're talking transportation can help provide, fill that need.
Thank you. Uh, and the last question here is uh, as you probably very well know, um, commissioners can make recommendations to the city uh on matters that sometimes can be controversial and can have differing and opposing viewpoints uh from the public. And so talk a little bit about how uh as, as a participant on this commission, uh, you would approach that as it relates to the work of this commission.
I'm going to answer that by example. You may not remember, there was a time I sat in the hot seat and Julie Strong had the most relevant question. She asked about, this was after um, in St. Paul, there had been an attack on a mosque. And she said, what is our commission doing to address the issue of um bias and hatred and, and so on? And I said, quite frankly, under the scope that we had written, we had no mandate. So it was imperative that we remain neutral in all such circumstances at that time. And if you're going to approach an issue and bring both sides in, you do need to remain neutral. I mean, no question. But um, under the new scope, we have a new mandate. And I could answer Julie's question a lot better. And I can say, we address it. We address it with dialogue to begin with, with a search for resources that can be potential solutions to the, to the problem. And getting those out to the people who need them the most. What I really don't like is when the commission goes to the city council and says, we want a proclamation. Specifically, it's not, not, I'm not talking about proclamations against hatred or against, that's easy, right? But we want to pro, look, the city, I'm, okay, I'm Jewish, all right? The city of St. Louis Park came out with, I don't know what, what, whether they call it a proclamation or a statement or what. But they came out with something that said, we support the people of Gaza. Okay, who doesn't? They're suffering, you know? But there are two sides to that issue. So if Roseville wants to do something like that, if the city. So if Roseville wants to do something like that, if the city council wants to do something like that, can we do advice and consent as a commission? And figure out a way to help make the statement so that it's inclusive and so that it has meaning, but not just walk away from the issue? Does that answer your question?
I think it does, yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Well, we do wanna, that's, that's the five questions. Is there anything you want to make sure that maybe we haven't covered or questions you have for us? All right. Well, thank you again, and we didn't have a chance, I don't think, to say it in person when you cycled off the HRAC, but thank you again for your work on that commission as well.
We're all learning. But thank you all for that opportunity. You know, I hope you, for this opportunity, which I think is far more important. Okay.
Wish you luck. And we'll make our decision on September 9th and enjoy the rest of your evening. See you. Good, how about you? Thank you for being here and make yourself comfortable.
Thank you. I get my name tent out.
That's right. She's so, tent.
Yeah.
It's your first test. Is that the technical word? I didn't.
What else would it be?
Isn't it is now? Place card.
Yeah, all that might make sense.
That's, that's for the dinner tent. This is not, this is not a state dinner or anything. All right, well, thank you for applying for the Equity and Inclusion Commission in Roseville and thank you for being here this evening for this interview process. It's very helpful, I think, to the council to see people in person and get to know you through a set of questions, you know, in addition to the information that's in the application you provided. That really does help us make a good decision on who we appoint and we've, I think we've, we've got a pretty good record of some, some really great people serving on our commission. And I have to say, people that didn't get appointed were pretty great too. So that's, that's a testament to the people of Roseville. So, but enough about that, let's, let's get on with the process here. We'll do a round of questions from the council members that are here. We do have two that are absent. Councilmember Strong and Councilmember Schroeder are not able to be here, so they'll watch a video of this and be able to be informed in the decision-making that we'll undertake after this. And then after that, if there is anything we haven't covered and you want to make sure and let us know, or any questions you have for us, we'll have some time for that as well.
Sounds good.
All right, well, I think in this particular round of questions, I am the first question asker. So I will kick it off here by asking the question that sort of gets it all going, which is, what motivates you to be a part of this particular commission in Roseville?
Yeah, it's a good question. I have found over the past few years, a restlessness about the state of the world to not, you know, put it mildly. And as I really have tried to focus on what can I really make a difference, it feels like that answer is something very local. And, you know, I am one of those people that reads the Roseville City Newsletter. And in reading it, I was like, that actually sounds like what could be a really good fit. Something that's sort of the right amount of volunteer time. I mentioned in my application that I've spent the last 10 years leading a nonprofit, which a lot of our work, because we're a social justice organization, working with adults coming out of incarceration, was focused on, you know, busting myths and moving beyond assumptions. And then, of course, a lot of work around racial equity and then also equity and inclusion across a lot of other differences. And so it feels like one of those spots where I have a unique past experience that I can bring in. That always feels good when you're, when you've got something off for your community.
Thank you. Councilmember Rattan for the next question.
Thanks for being here. How do your experiences and skills relate to serving on the city commission?
Yeah, well, first of all, I wanted to just name my whiteness, right? I'm applying for something around diversity, equity and inclusion and definitely don't want to take up space where I'm not needed. That being said, I think that especially as a white person in our majority white community that we each have, including making assumptions at this table, but we all have a lot of work to do. And so I think that there's a certain level of self-accountability that I can bring in being a white woman on this group, in this group. I also have some really, you know, different areas of difference. I don't have any children, no plans of having children. I'm a dog mom, I have a dog at home. I'm not originally from Minnesota, I don't have blood family here, I'm not still friends with my friends from the second grade, like often is the case, right? And I have very close members of my family who identify as members of LGBTQ community. Like, there are a lot of places where I think I can bring awareness of what difference looks like in our community, even as I show up in the way that I do.
I'm gonna ask a quick follow-up on that too. So the first question's more specific to this commission and the second question is a little more broad. Can you talk about, have you had experience in sort of a committee-type decision-making mode or that sort of thing? Yeah, that, that might be instructive as to your, your work on this, on a commission in general.
Yeah, yep. I'm currently a volunteer member of the Board of Directors of Eureka Recycling. Thank you all for having them as a city vendor, in fact. And actually, it was through, it was Eureka's last process through the RFP that I remember, it was before I lived in Roseville, seeing that there was a question around what sort of equity and inclusion work was required. And that was very striking and inspiring, but, so I volunteer on that group. I also, in my previous role as a CEO of a nonprofit, had to work with a board and lots of committees and I feel like have a fairly reasonable expectation of what it looks like to influence policy versus when you're in that decision-making seat, which is, you know, it's always fun to shake things up. Sometimes it's harder to have restraint and recognize that change takes time. But also in other previous volunteer opportunities, have done a lot of committee work. So I'm very versed in collaboration and compromise and all the things. I currently work in a nonprofit. I'm preparing for next week's in-person board meeting with 15 people coming together and agendas and all sorts of things. So it's an area that I feel very comfortable in.
Thank you, appreciate that opportunity. Follow-up, Councilmember Graff.
Great.
Please explain your understanding of the scope or duty of the commission.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's one of my questions for you all when we get to it. Definitely I have, my understanding so far has a lot to do with a group of individuals, of citizens of the city of Roseville, providing input and accountability, I think, for part of the next steps of what the city's plan looks like as we build a community that includes and is thriving. And it seems as though, this feels a little bit like a dust. It seems as though really being focused on the city of Roseville's staff and policies and like, it seems very internal rather than being perhaps like a really large picnic or like something that's more broad and focused on the community. And you could tell me later if I got that right.
No wrong answers.
Okay, all right.
Especially on the next question.
Okay.
So we always, I do, as a bit of a change of pace in the process here after a little bit of intensity, can you talk about what you love most about living in Roseville?
I enjoyed this question and I've been thinking about it. It is a tie between all of the amazing paths. My husband and I have a dog, I already mentioned, clearly I love our dog so much. And we go on a lot of walks in the beautiful parks. And so we can walk down to the nature preserve and the Arboretum and land over in Central Park. And it's just, it's, it feels so spoiling to be at a spot that you can be 20 minutes to downtown St. Paul or 20 minutes to downtown Minneapolis, but then also you see deer just walking in the park. And so that's, that's really great. And I'm also really in love with the By Nothing Group that I'm a part of. And I think, like, it really is about community and coming from a place of abundance and that we can meet each other's needs. And it is a wild thing that I have joined into, but I love it so much. And it's just, it's been a fun way to get to know neighbors because I'm not originally from Roseville.
I think that is the first time that that has.
Are you serious?
Certainly a question, so we were noting.
Yeah.
Probably trying to give you something.
Sometimes the commission makes a recommendation on a matter that has a lot of strong feelings from the public, perhaps opposing perspectives. How would you expect to deal with such situations while serving on the commission?
Yeah, well, I think it's said that criticism is a sign of commitment. So I think for as much as we think of feedback being a gift, that's really the approach that I try to take as a human, being grounded in each of us having a voice and a say being important and also continuously rooted in the job that we have to do as a commission. And during all that with a lot of compassion and empathy, because there are a lot of strong feelings across the spectrum as we talk about equity and inclusion.
Those are the questions. Is there anything you want to make sure that we know as we're considering your application that we maybe haven't covered in the questions or any questions you have for us?
No, I mean, we talked about the By Nothing Group, so I think we're good.
And I have to say, I think your, you know, your answer on the scope and duties was, was.
Okay, good. That was the question I was going to ask.
Wasn't out in left field, some of your, you should be all right. So. That topic, especially with this commission being a new commission.
Right.
Very much on our minds through this process. So hopefully we all know what the scope and duties of the commission has as well.
For sure, yeah.
Well, thank you again for coming forward and being interested and taking some time to be with us this evening for the interview. The council will make our decision on the appointments on September 9th, which is our next council meeting, and we'll make sure that the staff follows up with all the applicants. And we always want to encourage folks, even if you may not be appointed, because we've got more applicants than spots, there's lots of opportunities to volunteer with the city. And Rachel, who greeted you out there, will be happy to help you with it. Thank you again and much to look in this process.
Thanks so much. Take good care. Thanks for your work. Help seeing around people.
Yes, yes. Normally, there's a few more people at the table.
As she said, some couple were sick or something.
Yeah. So we're doing the best we can.
Is this one mine?
That is perfect. Thank you again for applying for the Equity and Inclusion Commission in the city of Roseville and for being here this evening for the interviews. Always a challenge in the summer evenings to be able to get all the folks here, so, including the council. And so, yeah, but we, what we'll do is we'll do a round of questions from council members and then we'll have an opportunity after that, if there's anything that you want to make sure we know about in support of your service or anything you want to ask us at that point, we'll have some time for that as well. And our two council members that aren't with us this evening are going to be able to watch a video of this, that's why we're in the chambers here, so we have the ability to do that recording and provide that then for them to be informed as they are part of this decision.
Awesome.
Well, with that, we will start this round of questions with Councilmember Rattan.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, of course.
What motivates you to be part of this, the Equity and Inclusion Commission?
I just really value diversity and I am just grateful to live in Roseville with all the diversity and everything that it brings. And I, I mean, I, I grew up in southern Minnesota, very much so, very white, very segregated. And I just appreciate all the diversity that Roseville brings. And I feel like being on a committee where my voice can be heard and I can talk about that diversity in a healthy way with other members of Roseville can be really cool and just a good opportunity for me as well too.
Thank you.
Councilmember Graff on the second question.
Thanks for being here.
How do you, your experiences and skills relate to serving on the city commission?
I am a mental health therapist in Roseville and so I live and serve in Roseville. And I really appreciate the diversity of clients that I work with now in an outpatient clinic. But when I was first getting licensed, I drove, it was in-home therapy, and so I drove to my clients' homes and their schools and saw them sometimes two or three times a week, very low economic status, very high needs, children mostly that I saw. But I saw, got to know the families and got to drive all around the twin cities and really get to know school districts and just families in different neighborhoods and really like see, and a lot of my clients were in rough neighborhoods, east St. Paul, north Minneapolis, and to really see through their eyes like what their stressors were, what they went on. And I felt like I could really learn a lot from them. And I take now, because of course my clients now are more, they're not as high needs, I can see them weekly, bi-weekly, and they do okay without me. And I can now take what I learned from that and when they're talking in front of me, I'm like, oh, I imagine this is what it was at home too. And so I believe my like skills as a therapist will make me a really great member of the committee. I feel like I have a different lens that I see the world through because of my experience. And then in 2020, I actually, I got trained in EMDR. And so it's a, it's eye movement desensitization reprocessing. It's lots of fancy words that helps you reprocess your memories. So through bilateral stimulation. And so if there's a negative image and negative beliefs, we use bilateral stimulation and that can help you think of memory and just like life in a more positive way. And so I feel like also that trauma lens too would be a great asset to the community.
Thank you. So third question, it's very specific to the committee and this talks about your understanding of the, the scope and duties and role of the commission as you would be a member of it. Can you talk a little bit about your understanding of the, the scope duties and role of the
I know that they meet like monthly is the commitment for meetings. And then we advise other committees. Not advise, but I'm like, work closely with other committees to bring the lens of equity and diversity with them, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Rattan.
What do you love most about living in Roseville?
I love the accessibility that it is to the, to Minneapolis and St. Paul is great to be like, close to whatever happening things we love at the Minnesota Twins that we frequent, touch deals quite a bit. But I, but I appreciate that it's a suburb and not one of the big cities because I, I just really, I feel like a smaller suburb, a smaller school district, there's just a lot of benefit to that, that we don't, that there's not a large school district. And when I, I have two young kids and so, talking about school districts and seeing a bunch of them in my previous show was very important and where I wanted to settle down with them too. And I just really love the, the accessibility. I love Central Park, I love all the different activities that Roseville has to offer and just then, just the diversity and people that live here. It's, it's just really refreshing knowing we can all coexist and do well, do too well to do there, so.
And Councilmember Graff?
Last question. Sometimes the commission makes a recommendation on a matter that has a lot of strong feelings from the public. Perhaps the. Perhaps the, from opposing perspectives. How would you expect to deal with such situations while serving on the commission?
Well, dealing with the public can be interesting because some of them could be my clients and so I could be potentially confidential. But, but regardless, I would, I would hope that they would trust members like yourself, that you did a thorough interviewing process, that I would be a good person to be on the committee. And so that they would trust the officials enough to make those good decisions to have somebody like me on the committee. But also, I also believe that their concerns and their voice matter as well, too. And so maybe it's something that we didn't think about on the committee that we can bring back up in another meeting of like, well, did we think about this or do we need to change a statute or think about something differently to make sure we are including their perspectives? And I, I believe, and I, I try to preach and teach my clients, the only words that are in my office are you matter. And so like their voices matter, no matter if they're on the committee or not. And so it shouldn't be taken lightly because they're probably not the only person with that, that voice. And so that it can be a learning, a collaborative voice that we can use if members of the committee do not, maybe we're all aligned on one thing and then this outside voice has something different. So it can help us learn and grow and think about a different lens that we're not thinking about.
Thank you.
Good, thanks.
Well, that's the questions.
Awesome.
And thank you for, again, for participating. Is there anything you want to, if we didn't cover through the questions, you want to make sure and emphasize in support of your application? Or any questions you have for us?
I guess I was curious how long do the terms like, is it like a, you know, do you yearly?
Do you have a math degree?
I don't do my numbers. That's my husband.
We'll, we'll do the math at this, at this end of things. But, but because it's a new commission, there's a little bit of variability there.
Okay.
So a typical commission appointment is three years.
Okay.
And then what we'll do, because it's a new commission, is, you know, some people will be three years, some will be two and some will be one.
To kind of stagger.
Yeah.
That's why.
Right. And, and still, within our own rules about commissions, anyone who serves a partial term can still serve up to two full terms, you know, in addition to that.
Okay.
So we, but not that you have to, it's just that there's the opportunity to.
So.
So, but it's essentially.
Six years or nine years that you could potentially?
Potentially.
Okay, got it.
Six or eight, I guess. So eight would be the max, probably. Yeah, if you, if you had two initial and then two full three-year terms, that would be eight. But once again, you don't have to sign up for the full eight on day one. And certainly, honestly, and maybe we'll, we'll, as I think about it, we might want, you know, Rachel to follow up with folks. If you'd prefer to start with a shorter term than the full three years, you know, that, that might be something to feed back to us as we're making our appointments. And so we'll make sure and do that. And so I appreciate you asking that question.
My husband was on alumni board at our alma mater, and I feel like with COVID, he's been on it for a really long time, so. I'm happy for him, but I'm like, I'm kind of like.
Well, I think the general best practice is to have some turnover and term limits on any board.
Yeah.
I know on nonprofit boards, it's actually something that the, the critiquers of those boards look at, you know, if you don't have term limits. And I've talked to other cities where they've had like commissioners that have been on commissions for like dozens of years. So it's just, yeah, it's, it's a different way of doing business. So, so anyway, that's the answer to that. Anything else you wanted to cover this evening or you?
I don't think so. I guess any last questions for me? Do you feel like you got what you needed?
I think so. I think that was very helpful. And we always appreciate getting to know people in person as opposed to just trying to make decisions off the cold paper. And so really, once again, glad you could be here this evening and that it worked out. And now you get to enjoy the rest of your evening while we finish this process.
Yeah, it's that where you can get some time outside.
Yeah, I think it's still a little bit light out.
Yeah.
It's just a question of when the mosquitoes. Not too bad. We've got a seat all ready for you here at the table.
Jason.
Good to meet you, Jason.
Dan, I'm Dan.
Mr. Mayor. How you doing? Have seen you before, Wayne.
Yes, good to see you again.
Yeah, you bet.
And you can't be harder here?
Oh, I should have listened to that. Houghler was not able to be here this evening, but still does want to be considered. And so we're moving.
Visit this, so Zeno's.
That was who, that was just, I just saw, so this is Dan.
So. That's where we're at on the agenda. You are to worry.
It's just sometimes the, the order of things changes up on us, so we're just, we're going to make sure we're all on the same page here. But that being said, thank you for your interest in serving on this brand new commission for the city of Roseville. And also for your ability and willingness to be here this evening for an interview. You find that it's extremely helpful to the process of making appointments that we see folks in person and get to know you through this process. And so what we'll do is, I should say, we're recording this on video because we've got two council members who aren't here this evening. We actually always record it on video, but that's a specific reason that we need to do it this evening is so they can be informed as well in the decision-making. But those of us who are here will ask a series of questions, about five. And then after that, if we haven't covered something you want to make sure we know about, there's an opportunity for you to emphasize that, or if there's any questions you want to ask us. And then you'll be free to enjoy the rest of your evening.
All right.
So with that, I believe on this round of questions, questions, Councilmember Graff, you start.
Okay. Good to start with me. And it's an easy one. In some ways, what, what motivates you to be part of this commission?
I think Roseville is, as I walk around the park a lot, Central Park mainly, it's really diverse. I enjoy diversity. We used to live in much less diverse communities and we, I was born and raised in Shreveview and we felt like we were kind of coming home to move to Roseville from the more northern community. I'm a suburb of Roseville.
Yeah.
Right? Yes, yes, exactly.
That's what we like to say.
Yeah. I'm an admitted foodie, leaning towards Asian food, so all my haunts are kind of the university area. And this is proximity, proximity close to that. I have been involved for a number of years, well, a number of years haven't done it, but two, three years before that, we undertook an effort to, called Labor Day Project, to try to explore DEI-centric, LGBT-centric workforce opportunities. And we had a number of people with different perspectives. My perspective was always, there's missed opportunities by businesses to not be accepting of the other. And so I, that was the direction I took towards it. So we actually did like a two-year effort, video-based, and to try to educate business owners to missed opportunities in not being accepting of a diverse and equitable workforce. That was a little bit before it became in vogue and way before it became a political hot potato. So I'm keenly aware of, on a personal level of the political sensitivities of that.
Thanks.
So the second question expands more broadly than just the specific commission and talks about how, how does your experience and your skills relate to serving on a commission in that sort of group environment? If you can talk a little bit about that.
Well, I've never been on a commission, but when the, I think it was Group W, I believe, before it was Comcast.
Oh.
And as part of their license by the cities would have to do cable, you know, provide equipment, provide technology, studio space. I was on the original cable committee of that commission.
Okay.
So I go way back. That was back right out of high school. I've been interested in that space. There's just more opportunities to help, help cities that I was involved with.
Is that a good enough answer? They're all good. As, as Councilmember Graff said, there's no wrong answers. Right, right. I'm just trying to help, help inform our decision-making. Councilmember Brad, the third question.
All right. Please explain your understanding, the scope and duty of the commission that you're applying for here.
I don't have a clue. That's my answer.
I don't actually believe you. Let's push back.
I can, I guess most of it being a new commission would be aspirational. And I see it as a possibility to interject thoughts and goals and dreams. I certainly would expect that as part of a quote advisory commission to the council, we'd be chewing on stuff and coming up to a consensus prior to presenting a recommendation. But in broader terms, no, I don't know what you guys are planning.
Councilmember Graff?
What do you love most about living in Roseville?
That's a tough one.
I know.
Thought about that question. It's like, where do I start? Again, proximity to the cities, that's not, that's low on the list. I love the, the services, fire, utilities, police, parks, parks and rec is incredible. I'm kind of, I kind of, my second home is, is Central Park. I'm there all the time. Probably not Cory, but Matt probably gets tired of my emails because every time I see graffiti, I take pictures of it and he's, he's got it licked the next day. It's amazing. Tree's done, email fixed. Machine, thing fixed. So that's a big, big part. I do really appreciate the diversity, coming back to that. It's a community that I sense, you know, when I saw it driving down past Lexington on a sign or a diverse community and they're putting that on a sign, that to me is impressive. You know, especially when somebody flying a rainbow flag can get hate mail and this and that. I realize how hard a topic it is. So that's a big deal to me, to live in a city that's inclusive like that.
Now from the sort of softball question to a more of a hard-nosed question, I guess. But this is the last one. Sometimes commissions make recommendations to the council on topics that might be, might have strong opinions on both sides and in a lot of participation from the public at a commission meeting where that issue is being discussed. Can you talk about how you would expect to deal with those types of situations while serving on the commission?
And I thought about that question, and I think a lot of it is you have to pick your battles. But the other is you have to let a lot of stuff roll off your back. I know you guys are in that hot seat all the time. So I don't see it as any different. And what I, I guess one of the council members in the last cycle will appreciate this. When I came to their defense on some negative issues that presented themselves, I stuck my, my, my neck out and emailed the person and it was pretty inflammatory. And I think I included you on that chain. But you got to let stuff go. You can't let it chew at you. You know, if I start getting threats of getting firebombed, yeah, that's going to be an issue. But that's why I'm glad we have a police force that responds within three minutes with four squads.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Was there anything else you wanted to make sure we knew about in support of your application or your service?
You know, the, the one thing I'll say is one, you always hear about DEI as a buzzword, as an acronym. And since it's gotten more political, they're trying to rearrange the order of that. And, you know, different political persuasions are wanting more or less of it. I think a lot of people are missing the boat when they don't add an A to that. And what that means is you can be diverse and you can be equitable and it can be inclusive on paper by edict from up on high. But until people really own it and, and A accept those things, you're not going to have a real change in, and again, my direction, workforces, but also as a community. So to get true acceptance is the la, is the least of the, you can't articulate it really on paper. It's more of an emotion with between people. And the way I've also approached that is communication. The more people get to know each other face to face, barriers start calming down. And there's nothing that an HR manual can teach you about that. I've done a lot of HR with, for companies in HR, and we do these diversity trainings. We do these, you know, workforce trainings, you know, everything from DEI to LGBTQ to sexual harassment. But you got to personalize it and make it real for people. And that's when it starts to stick on.
All right. Well, thank you again for applying and for being a part of this and we wish you the best of luck. The council will be making our decision on September 9th, and we'll make sure that staff follows up with everybody to let you know. Anyone who doesn't get appointed, because we only have seven seats and more than that number of applicants, we certainly encourage people to, to find other ways and continue to be involved with the city because we couldn't do what we do without a lot of volunteer help. So I really appreciate when folks like you come forward.
Super. We don't want, we don't lose that opportunity.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for your time, guys.
Don't, don't forget your water and your sun.
Yeah.
Have a seat at the table.
So I didn't know how this was going to go, but I, I come from the business world and so I brought my resume and I printed them. So I'd like to hand them out.
Done.
Yep.
And if you do have a couple of extra copies to give to Rachel so she can give them to the.
Thank you. Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
One, Jason, to give to Rachel. We'll get them to the other council members. Thank you for being here this evening and for your interest in serving on the Equity Inclusion Commission in Roseville. We appreciate folks coming forward from the community and wanting to serve in these ways. And we also appreciate the opportunity to get to know you in person as part of that process. So thank you for that. I'll just talk a little bit about what the process will be so you understand going into it a little bit. And then you'll, it'll be about 10 minutes here and you'll be able to enjoy hopefully the rest of your evening. With that, what we'll do is a round of questions from the council members. We do have two council members who aren't able to be here this evening. And they'll be watching the video later to be able to see the interview and be able to be informed in their part of the decision-making. And then once we've done our round of about five questions, if there's something we maybe didn't cover that you want to make sure we know about or a question you might have for us, we'll have a little bit of time for that as well.
Good.
All right. Well, with that, the first round of questions this time, we'll start with me. And the first question is specific to this commission, a brand new commission here. What motivates you to want to be a part of this particular commission?
Yeah, so to be honest, like, I didn't know what I was getting into kind of post-college, you know, working. And my, you know, my oral goal for the longest time, my parents kind of instilled, is always like, you have to, you know, go get a job and climb the corporate ladder because for honestly, like, money wasn't, you know, my parents went through a lot of financial trauma in India, you know, and that was very important. But recently, a couple of months ago, my grandfather died. And before he died, he mentioned like, oh, I shouldn't have focused so much. I should have focused on things and giving back. And that's something I took very personally. So it was a combination of like, that kind of inspired someone to civil service. But also it's something I've always had in mind. One of my favorite shows is West Wing. I binge-watched it during the pandemic.
So you're way too young to know that.
Yeah. It was on Netflix that I watched it. And, you know, everyone talk about policies, you know, Democrat, Republican, whatever. But I feel like the oral show, that message was civil service and. And one of my favorite lines, and I like it so much, is that Jed Bartlet, who's the president of the show, said that decisions are made by those who show up. And I feel like, you know, whether that state government, federal government here, people take that for granted. And I feel like this is kind of my step in doing that, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Councilmember Hatton, second question.
Well, broadly, how do your experiences and skills relate to serving on a city advisory commission?
Yeah, I guess I could speak specifically to this commission because I talked to Antonio Montez, who's the equity inclusion manager, I guess, I don't know what it was. And so I know, obviously coming into this, I wanted to speak with him and on what his aspirations were for the commission. And one thing he mentioned was that he wanted, you know, this commission to be helped making decisions a part of all the other commissions. So you have to understand, you know, what the finance commission does, what the Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation Commission does. And, you know, I work at 3M. It's a very large organization. And one thing, you know, I've seen over the last three years, you know, I'm in finance, but I have an IT background and I actually interned in 3M's IT department and 3M's finance department. And I'd say my big value add is that very, very few people can take that step back and see the large picture of like multiple functions, you know? People in finance normally, they just kind of stick in their finance silo and then people in IT stick in their IT silo. And very few people take that like step back and think, okay, what's happening here? Right now, I was even talking to Rachel yesterday, I was like, okay, well, 10 minutes ago, and I asked her, oh, like, what communication does the planning commission have with the finance commission? What, and she's like, oh, they don't talk at all. Right? And I think that's to the detriment of everyone, right? I feel like a lot of things can be solved by just simple communication and the cross collaboration, which is definitely something this commission needs to be able to do and something I've been able to navigate with 3M, which, you know, they're a huge company with like 90,000 employees.
Councilmember Graff.
Thanks for joining. Please explain your understanding of the scope or duty of the commission you apply for.
Yeah, I guess I can answer that already. But specifically, you know, kind of my background, right? Diversity doesn't, you know, just mean race, it means like everything. And when I filled in the form, obviously I was born in India, but I moved to the United States when I was, my parents always changed it, but I was very young, you know, three, four, five. And I remember how difficult it was when I first moved here. And my first job in college, which I don't know if I put it on my resume or maybe I removed it, was in college, I was an English and math tutor to Somali and Ethiopian refugees. And though I can't speak Amharic or Ethiopian, I could relate to that fact of like, okay, I'm in a different place. I don't have like that family foundation or that network, just my parents and me. And I remember how difficult it was for me not having that first moving year, you know? I feel like everyone talks about diversity, equity and inclusion now, but it's not really much of a thing in the early 2000s. And so I feel like that perspective and my background can help provide value to this commission.
The next question is, what do you love most about living in Roseville?
Yeah, so, you know, obviously I was in college campus, you know? I grew up kind of all over the US because my dad was a consultant, but only I moved to Minnesota for college. And so I didn't know much about the Twin Cities. And, you know, my first, I guess, housing after college was actually downtown Minnesota. And then most recently, I moved to Roseville this year. So it was a very different experience at suburban life. And one thing I really like is the parks here, there's so many. I just, especially in the summer, and we had really nice weather this year, I went to like the reservoir at Woods Park and just seeing like that huge tank and just walking and I, the history of it and how actually it was made by a group of people coming together and saying, hey, this is a really nice area, we should maintain it, which again, goes back to, you know, that initial thing I said, decisions are made by those who show up, right? And, and now it's such a nice park. And I live near Lake Owasso, which is actually right here. And I saw, I don't know what the name of the trail was, but there's one that goes right across 694 and Lake Vans. And I think it's again, very well maintained. And I think as I get older, I'm realizing the importance of conservation and I think Roseville does a really good job with that. Because I don't think, you know, downtown Minneapolis does not have as many parks and is also not as well maintained, for sure. So, thank you.
All right. Do. All right. Sometimes the commission makes a recommendation on a matter that has a lot of strong feelings from the public, perhaps some strong opposing perspectives. How would you expect to deal with such situations while serving on the commission?
Yeah, so in Indian culture, people pleasing is a big part of it, right? And it's something that always kind of affected me throughout like most of my life and even a little bit to this day. And one of the things, you know, again, after college, you know, just working, I didn't want my whole identity to just be of my job and one reason I'm doing this too. But I actually got kind of my side hustle was, I don't know if you watch tennis, but if you know the people who like sit in the middle in the umpires and call the ball out and in, I got certified to do that. It's not that fancy. I've had a lot of parents shout at me, but going back, going back to the question, you, you asked, you have to make decisions that not everyone agrees with. And especially in sports, sometimes the call is very binary. And what I realized is no matter what I do, if I call the ball in or out, people, someone's going to get mad, especially again, with parents that are so passionate. And I feel like that role in hell, especially helping my job actually at 3M is it's forced me to be more assertive, right? Because again, like you said, you're going to make decisions that not everyone's going to be happy with and you kind of have to kind of stand your ground at times. And again, don't have to be aggressive and shout or anything, but, you know, again, I think the best word to use is being assertive and definitely being that tennis umpire has really helped me grow there from that people pleasing mindset, I guess. Thank you.
Well, that is the five questions. Is there something that you want to make sure we know about in consideration of your service on this commission that we maybe haven't covered or that you want to emphasize some more or questions that you might have for us?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions written down because I talked to Antonio about it and I also wanted to ask you, but obviously one big conversation we had was with the SREAP, the Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan. What do you think, obviously that was implemented a couple of years ago, what do you think has gone well with it and what do you think has gone poorly with it? Because obviously this commission is probably be somewhat a part of that. And so kind of having your opinion and your experience would be important as I potentially join this commission.
Well, we certainly don't want to bias you as to, well, you've got to do what, you know, people pleasing, you've got to do what the council says is the good and the bad with it. But I think hopefully it would be reasonable to say that we, one of the objectives is, is the, you know, is actually to try to improve the diversity of our commissions and this council. And, you know, I think we're still trying to work on that and figuring out ways to do that. And, you know, one of the, one of the things that has continued to be a challenge, just to get off on a little bit of a tangent from my perspective, is that it's easy to think about making sure that applicants and appointments are diverse on a commission that is our former Human Rights and Inclusion Commission or, or this commission. But we really need to think about it across the board and everything that the city does and also on the hiring side. And I think that we've made a lot of strides on the hiring side, but I think it's fair to say that we need to do more on the side of recruiting people for our commissions and let other council members.
I think we want to have our city reflect more of the population. Our population has changed in the last 50 years and our, our staff and our commissions haven't changed as much. So one of our goals is to do that and it's partly about action. You know, we've done a lot of work with the, you know, planning and all those sorts of things, but we want to make these into actionable.
For sure.
Yes. And so that, that's my take on it.
I don't have a lot to add, but I think one of the purposes for this commission is to look at what progress is made and make recommendations for next steps or adjustments or things like that. So I don't want to be part of the work and to bring back ideas to the city council.
Yeah. And I don't know if Roseville does this, I'm so relatively new to everything, but one thing, you know, where my parents live in Dallas, obviously Dallas is a very big metro area, lots of diversity. Specifically, my parents live in a city called Irving, so like kind of like Roseville and like the Twin Cities. And one thing the mayor really made a big push for is having a lot of cultural celebrations, one that's most wanted, so especially from India, you know, they have a holy celebration and the holy celebration. And even though we like, he's a white guy, you know, he came in and threw a wall. And I think again, it really helps the community believe in you as a leader if you're willing to go out of your comfort zone and they have events like that. And I think, I don't think Roseville has, I think, again, I'm biased for Indian culture, but I also know they have one for Chinese New Year and other cultures as well. So that was definitely, you know, one of my ideas, I just want to bring up as possible with Antonio and the commission if I'm going to join it.
Sure. Well, and I think we have talked about that in terms of like even incorporating cultural celebrations into our Rosefest or, or even just other ways of doing that. And so it's something that's been on our radar, but yeah, not a lot of action has been taken in that regard. So appreciate that feedback.
No, no, sorry.
So no, appreciate that. Were there any other questions you had? That was one, but you said you had a couple, so.
No, you're like trying to make it every 10 minutes. But yeah, of course I gave you my resume. Feel free to, you know, ask, you know, email me, ask you other questions. 100% more than willing to answer anything that you may have and thank you for your time.
You bet. And thank you for your interest. And what do you have to say too, we're always appreciative of very new residents being, jumping right into trying to serve in the community. And if it happens to not be in this commission, I know you expressed interest also in the finance commission, there would probably be some openings on the finance commission later in the spring. So, you know, if it doesn't happen here, keep, keep your name in the, in the ring here and who knows, maybe someday you'll be sitting in this.
Maybe.
All right.
Thank you again.
Yep, thank you and good luck to you.
Seat. A hot seat.
Hi, I'm Jessica.
Jessica.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we thank you for applying for the commission and being willing to serve on this brand new commission in Roseville and for taking the time to be with us this evening as part of this interview process. I think we've found over the years, we've been, you know, city has been interviewing candidates for commissions for many years and it is really the only way to, to make a good decision is to see and, and, you know, know people in person. So we really appreciate your ability to do that. And, and what we'll do as far as the process is we'll do a round of questions from the council members that are here. And there's about five questions. And then if there's something we haven't covered at that point and you want to make sure and emphasize it in support of your service or any questions you have for the council at that point, that'd be an opportunity to do that. I, I just note that we don't have all five council members here this evening. A couple are not able to be here. We will be recording this on video and they'll be able to watch as a follow-up. So we'll be all informed as we make our decisions. With that, our first round of questions will start then with Councilmember Hatton.
Thank you again for being here. What motivates you to be part of this specific commission, Equity Inclusion Commission?
I have a strong professional and personal interest in equity and inclusion. My background professionally is a, I was a public library director, a librarian, 17-year career doing that. And I got involved with equity and inclusion when, when I was a librarian. So I have that background and then personally, something I passionately care about.
Councilmember Graff.
How do your experiences and skills relate to serving on the Equity and Inclusion Commission?
I'll follow with some examples there.
And just to clarify, the question is about sort of serving on a commission more generally or on a board.
Oh, okay. So as a public library, particularly as a director, I was on everything, all the commissions. Maybe not quite all, but yeah, like marketing and finance and I attended the common council meetings each month, whether I wanted to or not, budget meetings, things like that. Yeah, so I'm, I'm familiar.
The third question is if you could take a moment to explain your understanding of the scope and duties and role of this particular commission?
So part of what interested me especially was that it looks like it is an advisory capacity, which is nice, the bug doesn't stop with me. Yes, it's just sort of an advisory capacity, particularly with boring policy and things like that. And then translating policy and practice into messages that a community might enjoy reading. I'm good with both sides of those, massaging that. I'm an editor now, used to be a librarian, now I'm an editor. So I have the experience looking at these documents and saying, you know what, we should revise it this way because this was unintentionally offensive, that kind of thing. And then figuring out how to translate it from, here's the statement that we people in one room voted on, how do we communicate this out to make a difference in people's lives? I'm good with that translation as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Hatton.
Without error, okay. What do you love most about living in Roseville?
So I've been here for three months.
Yeah.
Brought here from Wisconsin. And let me tell you what drew me to Roseville.
Yes, that, that's true question.
Yeah. So as a self-employed home editor, I could have moved anywhere. Within practical considerations, there is a housing market crisis right now and trying to find a place to live did limit my options somewhat. You know, looking within my budget, I wanted Wisconsin or Minnesota for the climate. I like this area. I love the upper Midwest. And Roseville won because when I looked at the houses that were dog friendly and had air conditioning, according to my budget, this was the one that was near the trails. So this is a beautiful city. I was nervous about moving from a dot of 6,000 people to an area of 3 million. And it's fine because I can step outside and see a deer when I need to.
Amen. Thank you. And Councilmember Graff.
Thanks for the answer there. And interesting that you said you chose this, you know, that was a good perspective, I think. This is a little harder question. Sometimes the commission makes a recommendation on a matter that has a lot of strong feelings from the public, often with opposing positions. How would you expect to deal with such situations while serving on the commission?
I was a public library director when we were the only shop in town requiring masks. And I survived that just fine. You stick to the message. That's, that's what it is. And you had to believe in it. Sometimes you have to work harder to make yourself believe in some messages than others, but that's what being an adult is.
That is the five questions. We appreciate your answers to those. Is there anything you wanted to emphasize once again that we maybe didn't cover through the questions in support of your service or questions you might have for us?
Don't think so. Thank you for taking the time.
And thank you once again for both applying as well as taking the time. We've got, I think, two applicants this evening that were less than, or about a year in Roseville, shortened amount of time. And we, and we had that in our last round of commission appointments to a couple of folks. And so really nice to see that we've got folks that are jumping right in with both.
It serves me too. This is how I get to be part of the community. And I saw the number one bullet point was the community one. And that's what we, that's what every community struggles with. How do we build that community? That's what every individual struggles with. And I think this would be a great way for me personally, plus it would be helpful for you guys. So that's how I'm looking at it.
All right. Well, we wish you luck in the process and we'll be making our council decision on September 9th and certainly Rachel and staff will follow up with everybody and let you know how we, how we did or how you did. And you'll know how we did by how you did, I guess. But that being said, once again, thank you and enjoy the rest of your year.
Thanks.
Be nice to meet you.
As well.
Do you think the others will be here?
I don't think the others will be here. Zorn, this one withdrew. Oh, Zorn withdrew. Okay, I got it. Thank you. As I said before, Holman is still interested, but not even. And no sign of.
Chalice.
Chen Shuber. All right. Well, we were supposed to be done by 7:45 and it's now after 7:45, so she should have been here by now. I think at that point, we had to have follow-up from staff with her and just make sure she's still interested and then we can follow up afterwards like the other applicant.
Thank you again, Rachel. Appreciate it. And with that, the special meaning to interview candidates for the commission is adjourned. Thanks.